Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, October 26, 2022. As always, we start off our meeting with an invocation and pledge. And at this time, I'd like to call Dr. Paul McLaughlin, Assistant Pastor with Bible Baptist Church Forward, to give us our invocation. Welcome, please stand.
Well, there's either one or two things that's obvious here. You either like me, or you want to punish me. Amen.
We like you.
Well, amen, I like you guys, too. Amen, sincerely. Let's pray. Precious Lord and Sovereign Father, Almighty God, we come before you today, you sheep that have been astray, asking forgiveness, for thanksgiving and holy reliance, asking, Lord, that you would grant us, as our God and Creator, the request that we, as your superintendents, carefully ask. We thank you that in your word you instruct us that if any of us lack wisdom to ask of you. To discuss, in this category, we, we lack this ability of ourselves to discuss, mediate, and enact good judgment that goes beyond the walls here today before this prestigious body of governing leadership ordained of thee. Through your word with the assurance and expectation of hope, we can aspire to greatness if we realize that righteousness exalts the nation. Father, this gathering here today needs to not only exercise wisdom, but through your leadership, if we will allow, to be honest and selfless in the decisions made here today, measured by common sense, compassion, and integrity. Heavenly Father, we think of those right now that are suffering loss as a result of Hurricane Ian. We pray, Father, that you would just continue to help them, to comfort them, Father, sustain them. And, Lord, just enable them to get through another day because of the loss that each and every one of them has endured. Imprecious Lord and Author of Truth, we humbly ask that you would be with our nation in leadership and session. Give them the wisdom and discernment that they so greatly require. Lead us according to your divine will and matters beyond our intelligence on this providential day as we look to thee for direction. In the name that is above every name, for there is no name under heaven given among men whereby we must be saved, we bring our request before you respectfully by faith, amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. Pledge and legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is citizen comments. First card I have is it Sorcha Augustine? Please come forward, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Sorcha Augustine, and my address is 5320 Lena Road, Unit 105, Bradenton, Florida, 34211.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Sorcha Augustine, and I represent the Miano Academy of Art. We just moved to the area in April, and we're looking for a new location to permanently house our atelier school. Not many people know what fine art atelier schools are. If you've ever been to a museum and you stood in front of a painting or a sculpture by someone like Michelangelo or Da Vinci, this is the type of art that we study. This type of art was blossoming in the 19th century, and there were many schools that were created to study under a guild, so a master artist, with a guild of artists underneath that master artist. And then at the turn of the century, when photography and modernism came on the scene, schools like this dwindled in the world to only about seven by the time that 1980 had arrived. So from 1980 to today, the atelier movement has grown seven atilliers into 85. And we are the only certified atelier school in the state of Florida. I think this makes us a valuable piece for culture and also a valuable piece for us to represent art in nature, aside from the work that Ringland College is doing or any of the other museums that promote modernism, photography, or animation illustration. So we're set apart in that way, and I'm looking for support to build an advisory council and also for a permanent location to house our school. It's about 15 years old, and we just moved from Sarasota. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you can give our clerk your information, name, address, different information, then we can, you know, and maybe have her send out emails to the council and that, and then we can maybe reach out to you individually. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next on the list, I have Bemis Smith. Please come forward, you have three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bemis Smith, 30117th Street, East Bradenton, Florida. I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here today for this meeting. I was here when we raised the limit on public comment, or actually lowered the limit on public comments to three minutes, because it was a time when we wanted to allow constituents to have a chance to speak, since our council people have the bully pulpit year-round, especially when they block all of their constituents or many of their constituents from their social media. I was opposed to lowering the limit to three minutes for that reason. And at that time, most people came before council to rant about specific issues. It wasn't a time when people came up to, to discuss individual council members. And in addressing comments from the past meeting, I realized that Mr. Sanders doesn't understand the difference between a disagreement and a lie. When I say that the payment of a large sum of money to settle a defamation lawsuit is a task that defeat, he calls that a lie. When he says that it was a business decision, that's a situation I call a disagreement. What is a lie is when somebody files a report with the police department and tells the department that information provided in that case was actual fact when it wasn't fact. That's what a lie is. When someone calls somebody ahead of a criminal enterprise and prints it in the paper, that's a lie. That's not a disagreement. So I wanted to bring that forward following the last meeting, because I realized that our disagreement was what actually was the lie. And I'm here again, just in closing, to ask Mr. Sanders to step aside as city councilman for my ward, because I don't believe we're being served the best we can. And I think if we can get someone else in there, we can be more positively served, and we'll be able to get better attention from the city and the city department. So that's all I had to say today, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a card for Mr. Ron Allen, and it has two things on here. There will be an opportunity under unfinished business to speak also, so just speak to non-agenda items right now.
Good morning, my name is Ron Allen. I am a city resident. I have my corporate headquarters in the city of Bradenton, and I'm an owner of multiple commercial pieces that, which makes me a taxpayer in this community. I've sat back for a number of months since my original unsolicited offer that came in on City Hall. And frankly, I have to speak up today to clarify the record, as, again, the misstatements that comes from a councilman on this dais is totally false. And I think it paints the wrong picture for myself, my company, and the city of Bradenton and their staff. When the unsolicited offer came in, what this councilman fails to tell the world is there was a second unsolicited offer that actually came in before ours. Hmm. It tends to be that, Mr. Sanders, you can shake your head all you want. There was an unsolicited offer from Silver Hills that came in prior to our unsolicited offer. When that came in, we then had our unsolicited offer put in, which I think most of the council, who doesn't want to mischaracterize everything, will tell you that's what occurred. The second part of the problem with the city is, this councilman also stands up and maligns the city administration that they promised the job to NDC. They promised, that was the words that the councilman used. You know what the city did? From day one, Administrator Perry said over and over again, this is a CRA district, which requires an RFP. The only thing he promised was that he would take these two unsolicited offers to the council, which he did. And then he started his statutory requirement of doing an RFP. And what's really funny is two of the five that have submitted under the RFP are our organization and Silver Hills. And I'm tired of him getting on the radio, getting on the internet, getting on social media, describing how NDC put an unsolicited offer in and the city administration guaranteed or promised that to us. That couldn't be further from the truth. And I hope in some time in the near future, A, the city corrects itself on this issue with a certain councilman. And second is, I'm not done with this councilman for the maligning he's done to NDC. And he continues to promote that now there's this scheme of an accident. It started off with cut brake lines four and a half years ago. Then it went to, somebody abused my sister on social media. Nothing ever occurred. Now, he has a mysterious bullet hole. I'd like 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay. Mr. Sanders, you have no information to be speaking now? No, we're done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Kurt Landefeld. Please come forward, you have three minutes, and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mayor, Kurt Landefeld, 3993 Lakewood Avenue, Bradenton. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Bradenton Police Department. Between early Sunday morning and early Monday morning, approximately 30 of my campaign signs were removed from three locations. I had gotten up early on Sunday and had put them out. And then Monday morning, when I was driving down to the supervisor of elections, I noticed that all of them were gone, or at least down. And I didn't give too much thought to it. I mean, I've been through a number of campaigns, and I know that pulling and stealing yard signs is a time-honored stunt from mostly desperate and losing campaigns. And so I was prepared to just go out and put more back up. And then Monday afternoon, I got a phone call, two phone calls, actually, saying that there were witnesses to people who had been handling my yard signs at one location in particular, and that there was visual evidence, both in form of a video and also with photographs of that activity. And so when I had that information, I thought, well, we now may have something that rises to the level of a crime. And I contacted the police department and filed a complaint. I was extremely pleased that within an hour, I got a call from a detective who asked me a number of questions about the situation. And then we agreed to meet again yesterday, where he reviewed the situation, asked me some more questions, and got a fuller sense of the picture as far as I knew it. The investigation is open, but mainly I just wanted to step forward to thank the police department for its promptness and its professionalism in dealing with, you know, what is ordinarily a very, very small matter. Certainly, the Bradenton Police Department has many more important things to deal with than somebody swiping yard signs. But I was so impressed that I felt I wanted to come forward and extend my thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Van Austinbridge. Please come forward, you have three minutes, and state your address, name for the record.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm going to need the use of the overhead, and then I'll leave these documents with you for public records sake when we're finished. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, Mr. Sanders, I come before you today as a citizen. I live at 6902 Point West Boulevard in Ward 1. Councilwoman Coker is my representative. But I come to talk to you about sign pollution today, because lately, there has been sort of an extreme amount of, really excessive amount, here's another example, probably about 40 examples of sign pollution, where people are putting signs in the right-of-way, which of course is a code enforcement violation. And the city code enforcement is either missing these, or they're just not concerned about it. But I hear a lot of complaints from my neighbors, people that, you know, I talked to at the supermarket, things like that, about the amount of signs that are left out. And actually, Manatee County, we had an issue on one of our county properties, where someone parked a big motorhome with signage strapped all over it for campaign purposes, which is, of course, illegal to campaign on county property. And I'd have code enforcement go out there and red-tag that and, you know, make sure the owner moved it. We almost had to have it towed. And then on 26th Street this week, I had to send code enforcement out there to remove 13 signs that were located in the right-of-way. But anyway, I think you get the idea here. And county code enforcement has spoken with city code enforcement, but it seems that your code enforcement just doesn't seem to have the appetite or the desire to get out there and really get after these and enforce them. But it just, it makes the city look dirty, it makes the city look trashy. And I'm a lifelong resident, and I'd like to see the city look better, to be honest. Here's another example. So I guess my request is that the city enforce more stringently the sign ordinance in the city and have code enforcement out there on a regular basis to remove those signs. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I have no more cards for citizen comment, so we'll move forward. Unfinished business, and this was brought up by Councilman Roth.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm going to do is, since I have a couple of photos to put on the Elmo, I'm going to go down and just do a quick presentation, and I'm going to come back here for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And I am going to, from the podium, ask Mr. Perry some questions, and then I'll come back. Just giving you the format, so. Okay. Welcome. So very rarely.
Please state your name and address for the record. And I'll just.
Very rarely, actually, this is, I'll tell you how rare this is. 17 years, the first time I've been on this side.
This side.
Very rarely in life will you get a chance to do one simple act that accomplishes two goals, two large goals. We have that chance today, urban redevelopment and site selection. The city is behind schedule on selecting a City Hall site, and the 14th Street CRA has been languishing for the last 40 years. Two 20-year mayors have come and gone with very little improvement in this area. Only recently, under the 14th Street CRA and city council, can city councils' actions as the CRA board have we succeeded in bringing workforce housing construction, workforce housing to the 14th Street area and this construction as we speak. Thank you for that. To further embrace the decision that needs to be made today, I've devised a plan that will add an additional $1.1 million to the building project. The city-owned properties on the 9th Street can be purchased by the CRA for $710,000 that the city paid and marketed as entertainment district opportunity, which will keep the city in compliance with the Arts and Culture Master Plan, which designates 9th Street as an entertainment district. I just wanted to show you that this is the master plan. Do we have that? Is it up?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see it here. Okay, so that's it. And then, and then under that plan, in 2020, we did a heritage district zone research concept. The research concept is the study group with Pittsburgh Pirates that helped us with this. So, and in that, it gave the boundaries, and it calls out LECOM. And then right here, lastly, in the cultural district complements, the entertainment district as previously proposed by LECOM. So it's LECOM that wants us to have an entertainment district in there. And it's a good plan. All right. An additional $440,000 can be saved by not executing the Public Works Administration Building Design Contract from two meetings ago. This, of course, does not include the savings of combining Public Works with City Hall on 14th Street, providing better service when working with the Planning Department, as they often do. Public Works and Planning work together. They're at two separate locations, it makes it not as efficient. And I will credit Mayor Brown for the combination idea. We, as the CRA, have created an assembly site and hired experts who have given us data designating the 14th Street site as the best option for Bradenton. Dr. Deau strongly cautioned us, if we do nothing, the slum and blight will continue. Acting upon their sound advice, we can further benefit by adding 40 additional Public Works employees to 120 in the job study. We would now have 160 jobs as the multiplier in the economic opportunity cost. And then I have that right here. So, and page 30 of the study that we've been given is the study for wages. And this is, this is an update that was sent to us by Dr. Deau, going from $7,766,351 to $10,329,247. Now, the reason that number's important is that's the multiplier of how we get up to the $53 million in economic impact. So that number will go up. This is a once-in-a-lifetime chance to do the right thing for the right reasons. That's why I'm confused that there are people who seem dead-set against the 14th Street site, grasping at nonsensical ideas and overcomplicated ideas, which we can discuss if needed. I hope this is a moment where we, the electeds, will rise to the occasion by voting for a more equal distribution of assets to a slum and blighted area through urban redevelopment, which is the morally correct thing to do, as we choose the only logical and fiscally responsible choice that can accomplish this. Downtown is doing great. Ninth is doing good. 14th Street is not. We can do better. All right, so quickly, Mr. Perry, just how we got here, I just want to quickly run through. And you and I discussed, I'm not doing any gotcha moments here, so, just so everyone knows. This all came about with the capital improvement plan, which was given to us around, right at the beginning of the year. Basically, the concept of doing everything at once, including City Hall. We did, so there was a space study done in January, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. Yes, that's correct.
The appraisal was ordered in that time period? And I have a copy from dating March 8th that it was done, correct?
Approximately. I can't remember exactly when we ordered the appraisal. I want to say it was probably February into March, but shortly thereafter.
Okay. Well, and the finished product's over there at March 8th, so. And then the regional impact study was March, April?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was in March, April.
Okay. And then, and we received the unsolicited offer, actually, now two unsolicited offers, so. And then, so in the capital improvement plan, which was the beginning, and the Public Works building. the Public Works building, we have, we had dedicated land for that, which is now the topic of discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Fire, we have the land for that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Public safety, we have land for that? Public Safety Annex Building?
It was the Sixth and First Street location, which was-
No, no, that's PD.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the Annex Building?
Yeah, the Fifty-Nine Street.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then, yeah, PD, and then with PD, there seems to be a little, well, anyway, I have always heard that it was going to be, it's been going to be Sixth and First for ten years now, that we've always talked about that that would be PD go. You wouldn't know that, but since, but we repeatedly discussed PD being at Sixth and First, and there's been no objections, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Chairman.
We received an unsolicited bid in March, and at one point, I know we were looking, there was, there was looking for downtown. I know I heard a Champ's site was being considered, not, not very practical. And then, there was, there'd been no other site beyond the Fourteenth Street before two meetings ago, when, when Ninth came up as a, as a possible site.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, that's correct. There was no, no property that the city owned, other than Sixth and First, that could possibly be used for both a police station and a City Hall. I think that's always been something that council has known in my discussions, but there are problems with that space as it relates to their, the rare of it is owned by a telecom entity, and we are proceeding and have proceeded with a resolution for a public condemnation of that property, which would be friendly. We've tried to do some research on that. Apparently, it was obtained by that entity many, many years ago, and a divestiture of the telecom companies, I think it was in the 1970s, they didn't even know they owned it, and had to do some brownfield mediation. But that was probably the only other feasible city-owned site at the time.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so here, where's, so we're on track right now. We've approved Contractor at Risk List. That was at two meetings ago.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, that's correct.
We approved the architect designated, what is it, early initial design?
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, that's correct. ACOM was awarded the recommendation of award, and we are in the status of completing the contract, which will come back before council.
Okay. And if, if we approve a site today, how soon can you and Jim get to work on the next steps we're waiting on?
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, when we talk about if we approved a site today, it would depend on what that site was. Typically, you'd start by doing things like a survey, a geo-subterranean environmental condition to see if there's any subterranean conditions that become at issue as you go into the next step, which would be a pre-development plan, a PDP, and ultimately move towards A and E D, art, architecture, engineering, and design. It would also involve whether there was any structures on the site, whether we, of course, own the site, and, and any other types of site conditions. So, if it was, if you're asking about the Fourteenth Street site specifically-
Yes, I am.
It, it, Mr. Mayor, Chairman, it's a pretty good site, as it relates to being, being, quote, shovel-ready.
Correct. Correct. And the only thing we're waiting on is that the art on the building, we're waiting to get it off so that we can, the building's been going to come down for a long time. We're just waiting on the art removal so that we can finish that. That's, that's a CRA plan. It's a budgeted, it's a budgeted item.
Sure, sure. And, and Mr. Mayor, Chairman, I think it's noteworthy that, that that would obviously involve a demo. There's a structure on the building right now-
Yeah.
And some other issues, and we would continue with subterranean environmental testing.
We've done that.
Which, you've done phase ones, and from what I understand, it's been cleared, at least for the property that had previously been the city's. I don't know if we had done the more recently obtained. And I don't see anything there that would indicate that the prior use had provided environmental contamination. Sometimes you can look at sites and say, there was a factory there, or there was a chemical plant, and you know there can be leach and other things that could compromise the integrity and require remediation. Thus far, we haven't seen anything on that site that indicates that that's the condition.
And, and the CRA, so you know, we did do an initial site check to make sure that we weren't buying contaminated ground.
Yes, sir.
So that's, maybe, it probably has to go more detailed than that, but that's already been done. Okay, so, and then, lastly, sir, this is the Ninth Street site. Okay, at 1.24 acres with a very irregular shape to it, with that little, I call it an upside-down F, the backwards F. Would that site be suitable for what we're trying to do right now with a joint, joint project at 1.24 acres and irregular shape?
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, it could be if we did property acquisition and other considerations. There's certain things that are advantageous on that site, and there's certain things that probably would require further diligence and background to answer that question as far as suitability goes, particularly if you're considering the needs, the programmatic needs of a City Hall that would require administrative functions, government, governance functions of council, and ultimately the combination with, with Public Works Engineering Municipal Development, which is currently housed across the street from that site in the Crowley Building.
Right. And, and, and I know from acquisition, the, the site, I know that there would be acquisition, which we know from the CRA, takes about six months. Even with a willing buyer and a willing seller, it takes about that long to get a, to get a deal to where you have ownership. It's about a six-month process. I'm just telling you that, that's from-
Yes, sir.
From two recent purchases in the, in the CRA. Also, you know, having looked at this entire project and looking at that area, that area has the largest assemblage of non-advalorem property, probably in the city, between the Pittsburgh Pirates and the, and the Public Works right across the street. It's, it's between Seventeenth and Thirteenth. It's, it's, you know, four square blocks of non, and, and being in a culture, arts and culture district, I, I just don't, I don't think the city, looking back, we probably never should have been acquiring these, these properties here, so, just, just my, my opinion on that, so. Okay, well, that's, that's what I have here, and then I will move back and we'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Well, I, I, that was my presentation. This is a board meeting, so, and I welcome input at this point.
Any input from anybody?
Okay, well, this is kind of the first I'm hearing, I mean, I, I've heard the rumblings, rumors, but I haven't delved into the Ninth Street benefits. I don't know what those, I'm just, I like the Fourteenth Street site. I think I voiced that previously and publicly. My concern is that we've talked a lot about having, bringing the public in on, we haven't made the total decision to do this whole move yet. We haven't even voted to sell City Hall. We haven't picked, I mean, I know, and I, and I appreciate that you're trying to move it along fast, because that's, I would agree with you. But I do feel like I would really like to have some public input on where we put City Hall. I, at first blush, like the idea of joining City Hall with Public Works and that, but I just feel like it's a little rushed for me. But, you know, if I'm forced into a decision today, I mean, I like the Fourteenth Street. But I do feel like there's a lot that I don't know, and most importantly is I want to hear more from the public. So, I'll start.
And just to make a comment to what you had said about merging the two buildings. Obviously, and I know Jim's on vacation, but, Mr. McClellan, but that annex has been going on a lot longer before we decided to really put this on the market. That new building there has been going for a while, and they'd been saving money to help pay for that. So, I understand why the site got, and I kind of disagree with you a little bit, Mr. Roth, on we shouldn't have been acquiring properties. Well, the reason we acquired that property was so they could build across the street close to their yard. And, and at that moment, that seemed like a good idea because of where we were. Then, when we start talking about City Hall and two sites, and building a $20 million building and a $4 million building, and, and really, what made me think of a lot of things was that, wait a minute, why do we need two buildings for ninety employees and maybe thirty or forty? So maybe say a hundred and forty, so a hundred and forty, give or take a few.
Maybe one sixty.
Right. But, so it was like, okay, why don't we merge that? And then, the, and it wasn't that, I'm not against Fourteenth Street. You've never heard me say that I'm against Fourteenth Street, but the opportunity to look at our options with citizen involvement, which everything we see that we have said that we're going to have citizen involvement. Twenty-four years ago, the citizens didn't feel like they got heard, whether you liked it or not, twenty-four years ago. There was a lot of stuff that didn't get heard. And I know sometimes on this dais, we have to make decisions that aren't always the most popular, but when we're talking about timing of this, when we haven't even had our RFP five developers come in and give us a presentation to see what they're saying. We've got the documentation in front of us, but you know how, when you get that presentation, which I know the reason, Mr. Perry, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we really haven't scheduled any of those is because right now, we're in the process of trying to schedule public meetings, and it's an information tour, really, of what's happening. And I think if, on November first, we're having our next one, you know, we had a little bit at the Chamber Retreat, and then now the next one on November first is at Kiwanis. And then others are being scheduled, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Perry?
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, we have a schedule that Ms. Roberts has put together with some of the staff to do a multitude of different community outreach initiatives.
And that's one of the things that I think is very important, to have the public outreach done, give them the information, and see, just like if we would have rushed getting all of the information for the annex for Public Works, we wouldn't have come up with merging the buildings, which is not only a savings today, it's a savings forever.
It's a good idea.
Right. So, Mrs. Coker?
Is it, I mean, if we decide to do the two together, can that happen on Fourteenth Street, or is that only on the Ninth?
No, it's, it's-
It can happen.
It can happen a multitude of places, but-
Okay.
You know, and when you look at it, and then again, I understand the process of wanting to, to own the property, so we're not taking property off, but I think there's an opportunity, as we discuss through this, depending on, you know, obviously, the Sixth Avenue site could be used for both. It's going to be a big enough piece of property, once we acquire that. So, you know, we have not really wordsmithed through that opportunity, keeping those together. We have not looked at Ninth. If we had to acquire property on Ninth, and, and we did, we can also make more parking for Village of the Arts without taking away the, the property that we just owned. So, there, and again, we went to a Village of the Art meeting on a Monday night, and you started thinking about some of the questions that the citizens ask. So that's what made me start thinking, is there other options? And maybe the Ninth, as we talk about, isn't the right site for what we're talking about with this building, but we own the property. We might be able to help the Village of the Arts with some of the parking, because it is within walking distance without crossing a major highway in, in a way. So, we have not, in this council, we've had some meetings, but we have not discussed this like we're discussing today. So I appreciate Mr. Roth bringing up the discussion, and I think it's very important, but I think there's still a lot over the next couple of months that, until we actually meet with the, the developers to find out, why would we go much farther than we've gone right now? And is, is a month or two, Mr. Perry, going to devastate any project we do?
Mayor, I'm going to have Ms. Fortin hand out a letter that I sent to the developers as recently as Friday, that kind of addresses, at a certain level, that question, which is basically, we have developers that took their time, effort, energy, and money to put together proposals, and we had received some inquiries regarding where we're at. And so, I put together a carefully worded, I think, memorandum letter to the proposers, basically trying to advise them where we're at and how we may proceed. And I tried to make sure I didn't take any liberties and pointed out that it's a decision that'll be made by council, and that we would probably contemplate bringing in some of the proposers at the appropriate time. There's, it's a delicate balance. We're threading a needle at a certain point, to the extent of folks that probably engage in this type of development understand that it doesn't happen overnight, but at the same time, there are economic conditions of interest rates, material, labor, and the like, that they build their pro forma at. And, and their, their interest in those proposals sometimes could wane, sometimes could, could get even more so interesting with some changes in those macro conditions. And we all see what's happening with the real estate market and supply chain and everything in between that. So, I think this letter tried to do that to some of the folks that had, all the folks that had put in proposals, and I thought it was important to share that letter with everyone.
Right. And I think that's, that's very important, because when you look at it, we have only certain scheduled meetings, but what going through with the individuals, the five individuals, those aren't scheduled meetings. Those are going to be meetings that we're going to start working through. And I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of them are probably waiting for two weeks, because the culture of this country, supply chain, everything else, and things could change, you know, and I think we've seen where some of the costs have pulled back a little bit, some have gone up a little bit on some of the supply chain. So I know, that's, that's think, you know, I think that opportunity right now is to work within what we know, try to schedule, continue to schedule our meetings, and then get with these five. And then again, we may try to start scheduling meetings, and anything I've ever been involved in, when you're talking about large projects, and not this large, but some pretty big projects, four, five are in, but then when they get to the RFPs, sometimes one or two decide not to do it, and then you get your final three, and you go from there. But, but no, I think, appreciate that. But, Ms. Coker, did you have something else for, I was going to go to you.
I know, I did. Were you?
She were done? Okay. Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you. Mr. Roth, thank you for that timeline, because I was, in the last week, trying to go back and look at, when were we discussing this, and when were we discussing that? I've only been here a year and a half, or a little more. So I was kind of losing track of the timing, but we have been discussing this quite a bit. And I am definitely one that really pushes or preaches that we should have community input. I am also one that says, why in the world does government move so slowly? And I'm beginning to understand why. And just looking at, and this Ninth Street site just kind of came up, when it looked like we were all kind of pointing towards, you know, Fourteenth Street for City Hall. And it's great now to try to combine Public Works, that, that I didn't see coming, but it, it makes perfect sense. It looked like we were leaning towards, because I even thought people were discussing plans or something, I don't know, or just where the police headquarters was going to go. Timeline. I do recall when this first kind of was thrown out to the wall to see, I guess, if it'll stick or catch someone's ear. And it was around the same time, when we were talking about selling City Hall, it was around the same time that there was some buzz about the county commissioners might get rid of the public library downtown, and, and it stirred up a lot of response. So, so the public is hearing this stuff, and they're responding when they are not happy. I have not heard, in that timeframe, anyone complaining about us selling City Hall and where it's going to go. Now, it is great that we have, you know, the mindset that we want to hear from people, because that's absolutely what we should be doing. But have, have we been talking about this enough publicly? That, you know, we should be able to have some meetings rather quickly and get a good sense of, you know, where, where we are, but at the same time, I don't know why we're kind of dragging our feet now, too. And I wanted to talk about that, the Ninth Street site. As I looked- now, too. And I wanted to talk about that, the Ninth Street site. As I looked at that upside down, or backwards F, there were some houses there, at least I thought I saw three. So, to have a second option, we're going to take families' homes? Are these homes occupied? Do we know?
Mayor, Councilor Coachman, the only thing I'd tell you about that, is one of those two homes, I did drive by, probably about four, five months ago, and it was undergoing renovation. I sent James out there, because there was all kinds of construction debris that was placed on the road by the renovating contractor, and I said, could you get them to clean that up? And he went out there, and that was a rental property. I think a lot of those properties in that area are rental properties. I don't think that they're, they've been homesteaded. But, but, I'd have to check.
And not viable for homesteading?
They, they could be. And, and, and they, you know, obviously could turn from a rental property into a, a homestead, ultimately. That's the only thing I could tell you about those two homes. One of them I know about, as recently as six months ago, based on that very brief encounter and experience.
And another one of my probably issues is homesteading, you know, and it's in blighted areas. That's another thing that I just really want to see happen more, as opposed to less, because I feel like in blighted areas, when you own your property, you kind of take a little more pride, and you feel a little more vested, as opposed to you're going lease, a year lease, year to year, month to month, and not necessarily caring much about where you are. I, I have to admit, I'm, I'm a little maybe biased. I, the Fourteenth Street was just kind of in my mind, and it seemed like it was a great catalyst for that area. And we even had some experts tell us that. Again, we definitely need to hear from the public, but I hate for us to mess around and take ten years to get this done.
And I agree with you on that. And I think, as, as you look on the Ninth, it, my thing wasn't to put it on the Ninth. Mine was when the opportunity to merge the buildings were to, was to look at government property, and obviously, I don't think that site, as it sits, would work with what we're doing. And that's why you have property to the north, two businesses to the north, that possibly might want to relocate in a, in a better situation for them, for their businesses, as well as sell it, as well as, we talked about on Ninth, wanting to put your directional roundabouts, that would help us do that, for traffic flow, that would also help us. And again, what really made me start thinking in some different directions, was the parking for Village of the Arts. Because if you go and you have any meeting with Village of the Arts people, that's all they talk about. And they do not want to put parking on the property that the CRA acquired.
Oh, that's-
You know, and they keep saying that, you know.
Well, they, they, I mean, well, can it, but before-
They said that Monday night.
Before we, before we-
They don't want it to be only parking.
No.
Before, well, let me, can I just make one more comment that I didn't, didn't make? Also, I had heard the buzz, even before I, I was considering campaigning, that an entertainment district was going to come in that area. And putting a City Hall across from LeCom, that doesn't, that doesn't scream entertainment. But, well, maybe it does.
Entertainment, but no, and what, what-
I'm sorry.
For Wednesdays. No, but in my thing with talking to those people, they do not, they said at that meeting, and they did not want to have parking only on that. And, but we want to have parking, Ms. Barnaby.
Uh, I was just going to add, what I, what I thought I heard at that meeting was, their idea of a parking lot being an asphalt parking lot with parking stops, and a couple of lights, kind of thing. And, and when they asked me about that, I said, I saw it as a multipurpose space, and not something that we would put asphalt on, that it would be something that could be used for parking during art walks, but could also be green space, and could also be event space, that it wouldn't be set up as an asphalt parking lot. I seem to remember that.
And that's what I was implying, is they don't want to have, at full-time, only parking.
They don't want an ugly asphalt parking lot in the middle of the Village of the Arts.
But, when you have events there, you know, the one thing, when I talked with the, the people afterwards, is they want to know how we're going to supply more parking for not only the Met, but other places that, you know, we don't have. And you saw some of the things. So, I mean, afterwards, they were, we want parking. How are you going to give us parking? And I don't know if it's the, totally the government's responsibility to do that, but if, if we're trying to make that village to the next step, we need more parking that can be shared. So, that was an option, looking at it. We've got it. If there's going to be an entertainment district there, Ms. Coachman, those houses aren't going to be happy either. Right, so.
Neither was some of the Village of the Arts when Motorworks came about.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I live that.
Worked it out. And it's, you know, I mean, I thought that was the buzz, that that was going to become an entertainment, you know.
No, it's-
Be nuts.
All right. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, a few addresses. I, I, I'll get, I just get to the vote of parking. Yes, we did, we acquired the property through, the, the CRA acquired the green property, and it was really for the elimination of slum and blight. That, that, that person had owned that property since the day the village was proposed. He, he's an investor. He, he invented some computer thing a long time ago. He came in and parked his money there, and it's been a kind of a detriment ever since, the entire life of the village. The concept of putting parking in there, it was part of it, and it was always multipurpose, and it was never going to be, I've never proposed, and I always said, stay away from blacktop, figure out how to do the parking, what that's impervious, because, or, or, or the, you know, the, the, where you don't have to put up, because if you put parking in, if you put that blacktop down, you have to put retention in. It'd be a waste to go ahead and do that, for a parking lot that's only going to be needed once in a while. So, there's ways around that. There's different concepts. At the CRA, I want to, I just want to give you some ideas before I leave, on what, and I, I, that is certainly a multipurpose property, is and always has been. We've never said, the, that, that whole property is not needed for parking. And the idea is, what can, what can the rest of it be used for? And if, if we even need all of it. That's, but the first thing we had to do, was eliminate the slum and blight, which we've done, which is, you know, the, the primary goal. We check that off the box. We've already done that. So, now, what we do, well, it's, it's wide open. But, no, there's never been any intention of, of that. And I know, and Gene, I, I, I've been in charge of the village since it got dumped in my lap, from here, from Reverend Golden. And let me tell you, they don't, you know, you get an earful anytime you go over there, and rarely do two people agree. So, it's just, and I, and I've heard, I, I've gotten complete details of that meeting you went to, and it was, the word productive meeting is not the way it's ever been described to me. It, it's a political, it was a political meeting, for some strange reason. But anyway, that being said, this has been, the reason I went through the timeline is, we've been talking about this for ten months. That's, that's what I really wanted to get into. It's, it's really been the entire year that we've been doing that. This has been out there, in the paper, talked about, everything that we did was a noticed meeting. Every move that we made, we've had, we'd, when, when required votes, we've done that, usually go through two processes. I just want to go back to the very beginning. There was a Herald Tribune, Sarasota Herald Tribune article, April twenty-eighth, this year. And, and Mr. Mayor, this is your quote, "If we keep pushing it down the road, you're going to get developers that aren't going to want to apply, because they aren't looking at construction five years down the road," Mayor Gene Brown says. "We have to keep the process going." That's what I've been trying to do. That's what I'm trying to do right now. Mr. Perry has told us on many occasions, he's ready, willing, and able. We have given him a gigantic task, and he's, he's pulling it all off, but until we know where this building's going to go, everything hinges on this. We can move PD. We can move, you know, where Public Works is, that's, they're, they're in a site right now, they could stay there, the, the fire and all that. But, this, this one site, we have to plan ahead. We have to plan ahead. We can't, we can't take to another step without knowing where we're going. You can't say we're going to sell City Hall without knowing where we're going. You can't make that decision. And there, the, now, as far as public comments, I am an out-there kind of guy, city councilman. People, I, I can't go to the Publix without people coming up and telling me what they think, and what I should do, or calling me a name. And I can't buy gas. I can't walk around the block. It's so, I, I hear, and nobody, absolutely nobody, has said, no, no to this. No, no one's against us selling City Hall. No one cares where it goes. I mean, this is, this is a different time than twenty-five years ago. It was different. And really, it was the act, it wasn't necessarily selling City Hall that was so unpopular twenty-five years, because I was in that. I was one of the people that didn't like that decision. It's because of where it went to. It was perceived, perceived that it was, it was called Taj Mahal, and it was all because the, the, the electeds were making sure that they had a beautiful view of the waterfront. And, and that's what was unpopular. Had we put it over at the property on First and, and Sixth, there wouldn't have been any, any discussion at all back then. It was where it went to, not necessarily that it was done, it was where it went to, and how, how it was done. But, it was where. And that's where I just, you know, on this one, the, the magnanimous act is to put this building where it will do the most good. And, and, and that's what I'm all about. We're public servants. We should not be trying to figure out how to give ourselves a nice cushy office, or anything like that. We should, we should be wherever the citizens need us. You know, and, and, and the actual location of where this building goes is an asset. It's, it's like money. It's, it's, it has value. It actually had value. I'm going to tell you, I've said it before, Mayor Evers made the public statement of, downtown will never be anything more than government headquarters. And by putting City Hall down here, he started a controversy that proved himself wrong. It was an accidental, it was an accidental act that started what became the revitalization of downtown. And then I came in in two thousand and six, and it was really, really, at that point, it started to roll. That, that's what I'm all about right now, is, is that this, this is a life-changing moment for that area. And I've just been, you know, and, and, and by the way, and I've been talking with Mr. Perry about this. We worked, we're very close together. I've heard different things going on, and, and I could hear, he's been, he's been a gentleman on this, of, you know, I have an opinion, someone else does, and he's not in the middle. That's, that's, that's great. I, I, I really enjoy that, that that's, you know, it's, I feel like it's been a fair playing field. And, and, and that's good. And this public discussion, I'm sorry that we have to have a public discussion about where we're going to put City Hall. There's no other way of doing it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roth. And I still stand by that statement I said, because the process does have to keep moving. But, there's two processes that we haven't even really done yet with the citizens, which can be pretty quick, you know, because we've already started it, and the process of meeting with the five developers, to kind of find out a little bit. Because if we do too much with that, before we really know, if City Hall, if the, the five presentations fall through and they don't work, then really, it doesn't matter. You know, so, we still have opportunity to pick a place. Well, that site, and one of the, the benefits to having that site, and like you said, you've never heard me say I'm against that site, ever. And, but, when you look at, that site will be there today, tomorrow, in a week from now, in two months from now, when we may have had the presentations from the citizen, or we've had information, input from the citizens, and input from the developers. So, that's, you know, I, I'm just more about the process right now, not making it, the decision doesn't have to be made today, and it's not going to change from today till a month from now, because we own the property. A lot of times, you try to do something in a speedy way, because you're trying to get the property tied up. We already have that. So, that's not, in my opinion, going to change anything, and I will stick by my statement, but I also stick by, I believe we need to have some citi-, more citizen engagement. And, you know, just like what we realized with the, you know, really talking about it, it's like, why would we have two buildings? You know, that was, but for ten months, we didn't think about that. So, maybe there's an opportunity that can do something to spark it. Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Mayor, I know that you said at the beginning of the meeting, that you were going to allow public comment on it, and I was wondering when we were going to get to that.
I was just waiting to get up here, so. All right. So, at this time, I do have one card from a Donna, is it Mathias?
Matthias.
Mathias. Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes, and please state your name and address.
My name is Donna Mathias, sixteen hundred First Avenue West, five oh one A, Bradenton, Florida. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to share with you this morning. It seems that there is a huge rush to change the character and heartbeat of downtown. I've read the history of this building, and understand there was conflict in nineteen ninety-eight surrounding the construction. However, one thing that drew me to Bradenton was this building, as it has done with many others. Many people moved to Bradenton because they like the hometown feel with all of the city conveniences. That doesn't mean that Bradenton is backwards, but perhaps it means that it is progressive, as it sees the value and this appeal, and is not willing to be the cookie cutter city, with high rises that line our waterfront. The people I speak to are not happy with the idea that a high-rise building may go on the site, which will seriously impact the ambiance of downtown. I find it difficult to believe that this council would consider moving City Hall to an area of town that is not safe, or that you are willing to put your employees and every citizen who visits City Hall at risk. Building a twenty million dollar building in a section of town, just to enhance that part of town with the hopes that it will improve that area, does not seem reasonable. In fact, why move City Hall at all? I understand the need for more space. The building houses two functions, the city and the police department. Have you considered moving the police department to the empty jail? There is meeting office space in the lower floors, with jail cells on the upper floors, that could be converted to offices and cubicles. This building has been sitting empty for years, and is certainly a secure building. Instead of building new, why not revamp a building that is in a great location, and use what we have downtown? Certainly, you have the ability to work with the county surrounding this. As for the city, you could leave it where it is, and take over the police department's space, thereby providing more than enough expansion space for years to come. According to the economic study of sold, it could provide a huge tax base to our city. Over the past years, few years, the values of property in Bradenton have skyrocketed. People are moving here in droves, and paying high prices for their property. Won't this already substantially increase our tax base? I know of one individual who moved here this past year. Her tax bill almost tripled what the previous owner paid, who had only lived there a year, less than a year, actually. Where are the public hearings surrounding the sale of this property? In your meeting of April twenty-seventh, you stated that there would be many public meetings on this. I know of one town hall that was held on October the tenth, and I had to hear about that by listening to your meeting minutes on October the twelfth. This property will always be a valuable asset to our city. It adds character to downtown Bradenton, that once removed, we will never have again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathias. All right. Mr. Allen, you had on your other form. You state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Ron Allen, two eight, two two, Riverview Boulevard. And I would like to, first of all, applaud Councilman Roth for bringing this forward. I love the Fourteenth Street site. I would just tell you, I think, for all the reasons that he described. But, where I'm going to go a little stray on you, Councilman, and I apologize, is I have the unfortunate, or fortunate, depending on how you look at it, to be totally immersed in the twenty-four-year-ago, we'll call it, activity, when the, the location of this building was in its process. I think, you know, I'm not sure if you yelled at me, but-
No, no.
Or Ms. Barnaby did, but a number of people, and I don't remember back that form.
I don't think I yelled at you.
Well, I'm not sure quite how it turned out, but, you know, both Carl Callahan and myself, and Rick Foley from Foley Bryant, God rest his soul, who I still think oversees our city from above, we had to live through that. We were the design-build contractor. The only thing I would say that I disagree with Councilman Roth is, I think that you are making a mistake that we made twenty-four years ago, and when I say we, the city of Bradenton made twenty-four years ago, by not allowing at least some discussion with the public on what you're trying to accomplish. It could be the best thing in the world, but as we've seen, even the best things in the world tend to get derailed when people when people feel like they haven't had a chance to either see what's going on or be able to voice their concern. Again, I think it's a great idea. I've been developing in the city of Bradenton for over 35 years. And I think it's a wonderful idea for that to be there and for what it could do to 14th Street. I just think you'd need to be very cautious on what that community input is. If it delays it a little bit of time, I think the council, the city, and the community might be better off by going through that process. Sorry, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, any other citizen comment? Yes, please come forward. Mr. Allen, if you could please fill out a card for us and give it, but not the yellow one, the green one. Oh, did you give another green one? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Carl Callahan, 114 25th Street West, Ward 2. And I, too, lived that two years, from 97, really, end of 96 through 98. And I echo what Mr. Allen said, is it was a lot about site, yes, it was. But the biggest thing we lived through the newspaper, through public comment, was, you made a decision before you talked to us. And going back after the fact and getting their input, we learned, does not work. A thousand people came to the auditorium to give us input after a decision had been made. And that, even though we're willing to undo it, it doesn't work. Make sure you get the input upfront. I'm sure it will still be the decision that you all want to hear. It's just give them the opportunity to speak. I wasn't given the opportunity to explain that much back then. It was just told, that's the way we did things, unfortunately. And the other thing about that process is, it was not exactly as everybody thought, but indeed, the outcome was that the council had made a decision. Nobody was going to listen. A select committee was put together to try to decide on another site after the fact. That committee could not come to a decision as to a better location, and only to Mr. Roth's comments, this site made the most economic sense, but did not make the most sense overall. It was the cheapest, the most efficient. It was all of those things that made sense, but was not the right site to put City Hall. So just think about those things. It's not all economics. It may be about economic development, but it may be not about the city's economics. Those are gonna be the least considered, probably, as opposed to everything else. So, thank you. And I will do the same, I'll get a card.
Ms. Barnaby?
I think Ms. Coker had this up first.
Oh. Is it appropriate to address someone that, okay, Ms. Matthias?
Ms. Coker, is there any other citizen comment before we kind of close that out? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Coker.
I want to thank her for coming forward. I know it's not easy. And in all honesty, you're the first person I've heard say that they did not want us to move our City Hall. So I appreciate you coming forward. And I'd kind of like to just explain where I'm coming from, that we know the growth that we're experiencing here in Florida, and the growth is going to happen. And we can either stick our head in the sand, or we can plan for the growth. And I think going, you know, having a little bit more density in downtown will make that growth a lot better than if it just happens where they can get it. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from on it, is planning for it. I appreciate your input. And I hope, when we get to the end, that we will have, we want to keep our identity. We don't want to, we're not gonna be, we're gonna be Bradenton still. That's what we all love about it, that's why we're here, that's why we're called to serve. So, but thank you for coming forward. I just want you to kind of hear where I'm coming from. I don't want you to think I'm not listening to you, or other people, if they come forward. And this, that kind of makes the point of, I'd like to hear more from the community before we finalize something, but, you know, like I said, I like the 14th Street site.
Then Ms. Barnaby, then Ms. Coachman, and Mr. Roth.
Well, then you might want to call me last.
Okay, do you want to give up your time, Ms. Coachman?
I just have something short to say, kind of, I concur with Councilwoman Coker. Thank you. Thank you for letting us hear you. I agree with you. It's troubling to me a little bit to see 20 stories, but the unfortunate truth is that we are growing. And unfortunately, with a city like Bradenton, we're more landlocked than, say, the county. So since we don't have anything to really build on, we have to build up, let's just hope we don't build like 100 stories. There's no Empire State Building here. But thank you for your comment.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, two things. One, as far as hearing from the citizens, I just wanted to correct, I've probably received 300 emails about, "Don't sell the library." Not one of them said City Hall. Not one of them. Never have I been approached. The topic, and it's been, it's been out there 10 months now. I just want to share, I've been cleaning out my office, and I found this article from 2010. And it says, "Breathing Life in the 14th Street." This is back with Mike Kennedy. I worked very hard with Mike Kennedy to try to get some kind of economic development on 14th Street. It's a full, full, full page about it. Just a giant story about how, "We're gonna try one more time." One of the biggest hindrances we had back then was the economy. It was shortly after recession, really, so my long and short of it is, nothing happened. It was another big push to do it, and then the next guy came in who didn't want to do CRA stuff 101. So I'll just leave his name off the thing. But now, getting, and then to be quite honest, why 14th Street? You just heard it from a public comment. A lady, Donna, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. But she said, "Why would we move City Hall to an area that's not safe?" That's what it is. That's what this is all about. That's a neighborhood. People live there, our citizens, our taxpayers. There are businesses on 14th Street that have been holding down the fort because they promised economic development their whole lives, and they're still waiting on it. And the perception is, it's not safe. And the comments that came up, I've noticed in the paper, were very much to that, to that thing. It's, but, and it is safe. It needs to be changed. And that's what the study from Dr. Dio said, is that you need, this is the move that will change the perception of that. Now, the other thing is, why, why am I, why did I move this to right now? Well, I brought it up, it's been two public meetings that I said we need to act on this. Mr. Perry, did you not tell us on several occasions that the biggest hindrance you have to moving the big plan forward is not knowing where City Hall's going? As far as, as far as this, the rest of your, the rest of your plan is all checked off. We already went through it. You've got the green light on everything. And literally, what I was trying to do is help you get to the next step. That's my goal.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Roth, I think I have the same position today that I had when I discussed it early on in February. I said, "There's two impediments from us being able to successfully complete the capital development plan, which includes the sale of City Hall, and about four future infrastructure, core infrastructure projects, a police department, a new City Hall, a high coastal area forward operating emergency management center, whose value was evident during Hurricane Ian, and municipal development engineering center for Public Works to handle all the underground utility that we have to do, and everything else, transportation, infrastructure. These aren't water parks and splash pads and things like that, that are good, quality of life types of improvements. But I think we have to plan for the future. Bradenton is changing. Bradenton is growing. The underground infrastructure is old. I was out yesterday to a broken sewer main behind a lady's house, and it was a horror show out there, clay piping and the like. I mean, we have to service these needs. And we have to look at economic development. It's been spoken about. Two impediments. One, the city's internal sophistication and ability to do simultaneous development of these multiple types of challenges that are before us for infrastructure improvement. Number two, and perhaps as evident from today, the political will and wherewithal to take a vote. We take a lot of votes. This may be one of the most consequential for anybody that has to vote on this issue for yesterday, 20 years ago, today, and tomorrow.
Mr. Perry, so on that question, do you feel that getting some citizen involvement over the next several weeks will drastically change any of that?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't. And I think it's, you know, I think it's hard to argue against that, as pointed out, as some of the failures of the past, and in my experiences in other jurisdictions, in trying to do what are monumental projects like this. It's absolutely critical. I think by and large, the developers do, are aware that that's necessary, and probably recognize the benefits of that. I think today's meeting was one of the best spirited and thoughtful and honest debates I've heard on a key, key future issue for the city. And there's a lot that goes into it. I think most people understand that. The public, the development community, elected officials, people that come to these meetings and the like. And we do have a plan to do that. At the end of the day, we're a republic. We have local government, state government, and federal government officials that take those votes on behalf of the citizens that elected them. Those are hard votes. They could mean positive or negative things for those people's career in public service. I recognize that. I am not an advocate. I can't put myself in the chair of an advocate. Councilor Roth's points are very well taken. Economic development on 14th Street is key and critical. It is a good site for multitude of reasons. Other comments about when to make the decision with enough input and considering the totality and panoply of costs, of benefits, both, both from the city's representation, as well as economic benefits, as well as quality of life, as well as the future. I like the past, too. I'm kind of old school. But I realize that I live in a world that changes day to day, year to year. And when I see what's happening in Bradenton downtown, you're going to have a skyline that gets higher with private development. We can't stop that. We have zoning codes that allow certain heights, or certain types of projects and the like. We know in our planning department, just down the hall, that there's five or six key projects that I wouldn't consider them high, high-rise, but they're considerably higher than what's been built before. And that's the construction technique, particularly in a high coastal hazard area. You know, with concrete tilt-up and the like. We have a City Hall whose generator, when you walk out on a Friday afternoon at 3:30, is on the ground floor. We're at about, I think, six foot above the mean tide level. If that storm hit this area and came up the Manatee River, this building would not have survived, in my opinion. The systems itself within this building are dated. I talked to Don Bruner yesterday about how much money we've put into the building, how much money we're gonna have to put in. As we came back on Friday and went into recovery stage and turned on the emergency generators here at City Hall, we realized a couple things. One is, is that that generator only powers one AC jack in each office. If you look at your office, there's a red plug. That's the only one that you can plug something in and get power. There was no air conditioning. So there's a multitude of reasons why we have to make an investment in ourselves, in the community, and in the future.
And I don't think anyone disagrees with that. And I just want to thank Councilman Roth, you know, for, yeah, I'm not, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this up. And obviously, when we had virtually nothing on the agenda, you know, we could have probably not had a meeting today because of that, but I thought it was important going through to put this on the agenda because I want the public input. I want it. And we've had it, you may, in my opinion, we've talked about this a lot. But we've never had a public discussion on location where the community could hear, where that's why we were talking about going out to certain groups. Now, we've been out to the chamber, which is a large number of people, but a lot of them are business people agreeing, so they didn't go back. And maybe a lot of them don't live in the city, too, so. But I want to hear from, from the citizens on some things. And fortunately, or unfortunately, sometimes, you know, we all have opinions that are gonna differ, but we've got to do it cordially, work together. And sometimes, when you talk to somebody and you say, "Well, here's why." People say, "Well, I may not ultimately like it, but I see where it's going, and I see where the, can help us a lot of ways." And, you know, I mean, more, more people downtown tell me, "We need a grocery store." Because we want to walk to the grocery store and not have to get in the car. But you don't get a grocery store without a few more people. And some of it, like Mr. Perry said, is coming without us being able to do anything because it's already in the planning department. We own one portion of that. And again, how are we going to get through that? I'm gonna let Mr. Roth finish off a comment, and then go to Ms. Barnaby.
Correct, yeah, and, okay. So, and I just wanted to get this last bit in here, because I have a feeling I know what's next. So, one of the things that I did, because it really came down to 14th, you know, the 14th Street site was moving in the right direction. And just so you guys know, when I ran in 2005, I ran against Roger Lawson, who was no-growth. And I ran on growth, yes, smart growth, but not no-growth. No-growth is bad. I watched that in the Northeast, it kills cities. So, and then I had to defend myself. And I, I'd gone to, I have a whole list of things that I've done to educate myself on what is new, you know, it came to what is smart growth, New Urbanism came up. I started studying New Urbanism, went to the 46th. I won't, won't go through the list of things that I've done. One, so, two things. One, the 9th, 9th Street West, from the time I came in office, is doing great. Doing great compared to what it was. It was really bad. And that's because energy and effort and public investment had gone in there. Lance had prepared a worksheet for me of, there has been $32 million that has, in one way or another, been put into the Pittsburgh Pirates since I've been in office. That's all I asked for. I knew that the park's been remodeled several times. I know part of that might be, I don't think this included the Pirate City. But, and I'm very proud of the fact that in, on my term, we got a second 30-year contract with the Pittsburgh Pirates. When I say that there's $32 million that have been put in there, that's not saying that's bad. That's just saying, that type of investment is why that street looks better. If you put $30 million into a street, it will change the dynamics of the street. 14th Street has not received that. The housing that we put in over there, we paid dearly for that. The land was a third of the value. There wasn't gonna be any contributions. We had to, we had to put in millions to make that work, and I'm proud of that. And that's just, that's just, you've got to, you gotta spend money to succeed in this. And that's why I wanted to push this, you know, when I ran on, I wanted to try to clean up Where's Creek and 14th Street. That's what I ran on. Two impossible goals. That was my goal as a 48-year-old man. The two worst things in this city, I'm gonna try to clean them up. I'm gonna tell you, it was easier to get Where's Creek cleaned up with the seven government agencies and all the bureaucracy that went in there than 14th. And that's just not a good statement. So as I'm, as I'm saying this, and one of the things that came up in this study, and Jane, I'm kind of talking to you because you were, you were on the DDA at the time, and I know that you would have liked to have done this. One of the things that was brought up here was, in here is something that could be done, is road diet work. It's called, it used to be called Road Diet, and this is New Urbanism, the Comprehensive Study. And on page 84, it's the explanation of the road diet. We did that on 9th. It works. You know, it's like, it used to be 4 lane, it's like, we're gonna cut it down. It's not gonna work. Everyone's, "It won't work, it won't work." Well, you do it, it works. And it actually works better. So that has not been tried there. There's so many things that haven't been tried. And because of that, we have citizens that say, you know, "Because the area doesn't change, and it continues to look slummed and blighted, well, it must be dangerous, too." Well, it's not. There's businesses down there that are doing business and have been for a long time. There's people that live in that neighborhood. And I just don't want to see another generation go by. And I just don't want to see another generation go by of them suffering because it's easier to go somewhere else. It's, it's just, that's just wrong. I mean, so I'm at the end of, of, of a career that I'm proud of, and it was very important for me to push this forward and try to help the city succeed to the next level, and it just kind of knocked off two birds with one stone. So I appreciate your time today. I can read a room.
Well, and Mr. Roth, I don't think anybody's doubting what you're saying.
Oh, no.
Or saying that it won't happen. But we don't want to get the cart before the horse from the standpoint of some short timing public input. And that's my, that's where I'm at. I just think that we need to get, and I'm not talking six months, a year, I'm talking weeks and, and, and timing. So, you know, but, but again, to say, with, with our history, you know, we always say sometimes, once in a generation, well, this is our second bite at the apple in our generation. And let's do it right, and let's try to get the, the citizens involved and, and see if there's any other thoughts. There may be some thoughts that come out of that from the houses right behind 14th Street that we haven't really heard yet, and maybe it can help, you know, in a positive way. You know, and I think some of the parking, you know, because city government properties are used basically eight to five.
Right.
So there's gonna be a parking lot sitting there, you know. How do we incorporate that? Maybe the streetscaping helps for some other areas that you can park there at night and walk over to Village of the Arts. Some of that may be an opportunity, you know. So that's where I'm saying, let's hear some of those things, because we may adjust that we don't want to put the retention that we have to put there for parking, maybe we vault it. You know, so I'm thinking of every way so we have more parking, even though we don't need during City Hall, but now we're helping the Village of the Arts to have some parking, you know, at times. So those are the things I'm looking at, and with a little citizen input, whether, I've got video of that whole meeting that Monday night, so if you want to watch it, I'll send it to you.
No, no, thank you.
But, yeah, so, but what I can, what I've got is, I got, I've, hit me about merging the two buildings, as well as figuring some things we can do to help our citizens because of listening. So, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we first started on this journey of, of, because it's, it's been bandied about ever since the building got here, that perhaps we should sell the building and move elsewhere. And it's, it never took fruition. I don't think the economics were right during these times, and there didn't seem to be the political will to, to, to move the building. Well, for better or for worse, we got two unsolicited offers, and that kind of made people sit up and take notice that, gee, maybe this might be the time that we consider doing this. So we started a process of trying to gather information. And one of the things that we have spoken about, every time we have spoken about the possibility of selling this building, was to be certain that we had significant public input. And we talked about the idea of maybe having two different meetings in each of our wards, one during the day for the people that didn't like to drive at night, and one at night for the people that have to work. We've talked about other ideas of trying to get information out to the community. And to the best of my knowledge, I know there was a presentation done at the Chamber of Commerce. I know we had a small presentation at the Village of the Arts with about 10 people there. I know that we are planning, Mr. Perry, it was, I saw yesterday at Kewanas that you'll be there November 1st, to present information about the economic ramifications of potentially selling this building. And I was contacted by a civic group that I wanted to get on the calendar with you all. They, they wanted to do something in January. I have not been aware of any meetings that have been set up in Ward 2. And many times, it's not what government does, it's how government does it. And we have said repeatedly that we wanted to have public meetings. I am afraid by doing this, we're going to, if, if we choose to do this today, we're going to stifle citizens' input. And I don't want that to be the message that's sent. Mr. Roth, you know I was raised in that neighborhood.
Yes.
I believe that your legacy on the council is secure. You have done many wonderful things for this community. And I mean that.
Thank you.
But I am afraid, in this rush to judgment here, that it's going to be a problem for the council that remains. So I'm prepared to make a motion that we table this for at least, for 91 days, and that will take us to Wednesday, January 25th. That should give us time to get meetings out in the community, set up. I initially thought about tabling it until such a time the council wanted to take it off the table, but that makes it difficult to put it on an agenda. So I'm making a motion that we table this decision at least until January 25th. And remember, there's no discussion on a tabling motion.
So may I, before you?
Before I make, officially make that motion? That's up to the mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
I heard you. And it's, and unfortunately, I didn't really, really home in until you, you made it, made the point that Ward 2 has not been scheduled. It's important that Ward 2 is scheduled. Will it take 91 days, though?
No, I don't think so, but I just...
Secondly.
Okay.
The comment I wanted to make was kind of in reference to the 14th Street site being referred to as going to an unsafe area. Perception is everything, unfortunately, and sometimes perception is incorrect. 14th Street has changed. It was definitely worse. But let me tell you about perception. When I was growing up in my neighborhood, which now has, it has hit a lower site, level right now, but when I was growing up in my neighborhood, it was referred to as the ghetto. And it was simply referred to as the ghetto because it was predominantly black. There was an RN on my street. There was a dentist. There were teachers, a principal. A block away from me, two women that have elementary schools named after them lived in my neighborhood. Whether you had money or not, you had to live there. And it was a nice place to live, and it was a safe place to live. We could leave our windows open and our doors unlocked, just like anyone else could have in this city at that time. So perception can sometimes be off. Unfortunately, now that area has made some changes because that generation that owned those homes have pretty much died off. And their children, me, left Bradenton, didn't want to come back, except to take care of an elderly parent. So that bad area, or that unsafe area, deserves an opportunity to get back to where it was. Perception notwithstanding. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Well, Mr. Mayor, what I, what I will do then is I will say that I, I move that we table this until a time that at least one meeting has been held in every ward concerning selling City Hall and the economic ramifications that could come from selling City Hall.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second with the table. We'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on tabling because I was not gonna make a motion today, having, having seen what the discussion was in the room. I'm gonna vote no on tabling.
Ward 4.
What's the motion?
To table till every ward has had an opportunity to have a meeting.
Can, can that be amended to at least have some idea of timeline?
Only if the motion, only if the...
We've already started voting.
Okay, sorry.
Ward 4?
No.
Ward 5?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails three to two. Anything else?
As I said, I'm not, I'm not gonna put the board on the spot today. I, I'm satisfied with this meeting, that, that I feel that, that we're there. Now, if we can get this done, okay, for starters, I, I noticed that the motion, you know, went beyond my tenure. I just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it didn't, but, but I'm just...
Please understand, that was not meant in any disrespect. I was, I started thinking 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. And then I looked at my calendar for 90 days and saw that was one day away from a council meeting in January. That's why I picked that. Again, absolutely no disrespect.
Okay, very good. And, and so, so my, my, my comment is, you know, I don't know how long we can get here. I like the discussion that it was taking place. Obviously, I'd like to have an opportunity to vote on this, if possible. I would like that. I, I think I've earned that. I, I've put my time in and certainly on that street. Literally, Mike Kennedy, Karen Kaiser, Troy Dugan, and I walked an entire street and talked to every business on that street. That, that happened. So, you know, that's all I'm saying. I, I'm satisfied with where we're at right now. I, I was hoping to get a vote to let Mr. Perry going forward. I will take people at their word that the 14th Street site will be, as I said before, it's, it's not only, it's the right thing to do. I mean, it's, it's, the one thing that I, I, I believe my strength in this office has been that I, my faith, the way I was raised, of, of, you know, is, has held me through. And, and, and it's when there's right and there's wrong, and there's justice and injustice, I will go for justice all the time. I've always supported the underdog. Every, every time there's ever been any battles in here. And I, and, and also, I, when, when I hear Ms. Koachman describing the hardships of her, you know, growing up, I, I'm sorry, I'm, no, that, that was better. That's not fair to call a neighborhood a ghetto, like you said.
I have, I have a nice home and...
Right.
Wonderful parents.
But, but people do, people do say that. And, and they're saying that about the 14th Street area. They're saying that right now, and I just don't want to see another generation of children grow up in that area when we can change that. It's just so easy. This one act will change that. If we vote on it when I'm here, that'd be great. If you do it when I'm later, thank you for, in advance. But, but, you know, there's a famous quote, it goes to Napoleon Bonaparte, who, you know, we always remember Waterloo, but we, we don't, well, you don't remember it, the Colonel took over Europe. You know, he made one mistake. But his, the quote on leadership is, "A leader is a dealer of hope." And hope, I, I never, I never doubted that I was gonna get Where's Creek cleaned up. It just, that was my mission, my mission from God, and, and it happened. And, and same thing with this here, and I'll count this as a movement in the right direction.
Ms. Coker?
I just, I mean, I'll commit, I, I agree. I mean, I, I can appreciate your feelings. And I'll agree to meet if we can get it done before you leave. And I, I would like to have a meeting in Ward 1 as soon as possible. And I don't know what we gotta do to do that, but I want to keep things moving fast, so.
I think you've heard that from everybody. You heard me say, weeks, not months.
Okay, I did, I did hear that, sir.
And that's, that's what I, I hope on. And I, I mean, I believe we should start getting scheduled the RFP, for the five developers to come in. And I mean, just because it's holiday time doesn't mean we can shut down. All right? Yes, sir?
Ms. Coker, you said you would agree to get this decision for this council before Mr. Roth leaves. I respect that, and I, I believe Mr. Roth loves his community and wants his community to improve. And this is his last ask before his retirement. So, if Ms. Coker, I would ask that you make a motion to get a, to get this voted on before he leaves. The motion was just what you said, if you don't want to do it.
I don't want to make that motion. I don't want to...
I will make the motion to agree to have this location decided before Mr. Roth leaves, as this is his pride and joy of his community, and then we can let the pieces fall where they may. Far as the, that's the motion, but just one comment I probably should have put in front of it, is that I'm still back on step one. How are we gonna pay for it? So, you know, I'm probably the only one that's been saying that. So it doesn't look like that my thoughts are being heard. That's fine. I'm only one. I understand. I understand how it works. So with that said, I would make the motion that this council make a decision on the site location, because Mr. Perry also has said it is critical. He did point that out. And so we've left that, we've left his administration and his expertise to get this done timely so that we don't lose the opportunity with these bids or the other way around. I don't know. I can't predict that. I'm not gonna claim that. So anyway, my motion is that we vote on this site location before the last meeting of the year, December, I believe, is 15th. Is that the last meeting? So we got two more meetings, I understand, November 15th and December 15th. Correct me if the dates are wrong. But I, I say that we vote on this in one of those two meetings.
That's November 16th and December 14th.
November 16th.
Or the 14th.
And in December 14th. That's my motion.
Can I ask a question of council? If we, I mean, I'm making a personal commitment to try and make this work, but my primary thing has to be what's best for the community, not what's best for one of us up here. And I'm not saying that's what you're trying to do. But I'm just concerned if we do a motion that puts us in that timeline, and it's a quick one, and I think it's a little bit fast, I've committed to it, but if it doesn't happen, where are we?
Well, I think the motion just says that you, you're gonna decide on it. You're gonna make a decision. So, I mean, it'll either go, I mean, one of, I guess, three ways. So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, you're just voting on that today, that you will put it on an agenda before the end of the year.
For vote, correct.
Well, but also, it could vote, you could vote no...
Right.
On that property, you could vote...
Right.
Well, we can't determine what, again, we don't have the crystal ball here.
Right, right.
I'm just saying that we do that, one of these two meetings.
Correct. I mean, that, that's all it is today, is that you're saying that before the end of the year, you will take a vote on whatever the motion is at that point in time. So I, I understand your concern, but...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's on the agenda item that's put on there.
Right.
About, and, and again, it's... About, and, and again, it could be said we haven't had enough city meetings yet.
Correct.
So we're not gonna go forward.
The decision could be to table.
Or we're gonna go forward with that, or we're gonna go forward with another site.
That's right.
That's right, it could be anything. So, all right, so we have a motion by Mr. Sanders to, by the, by the December fourteenth meeting to vote on an agenda item of a location for City Hall. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, just to point out that, that, I mean, I wasn't gonna push for anything today, but I certainly would be happy to second that and point out that that doesn't mean, that just only means we could vote yes, no, or table. So, so, but...
But the appearance.
Well, if you don't, if you haven't gotten, if we haven't had the community meetings, I'm just thinking out loud.
And I'm not gonna...
If you haven't had the community meetings, then you say, "Well, I haven't had my community meetings, so I table." I, I'd be no different than where I am right now. So it's not, it's not a harmful motion.
I've just seen it as a compromise, as...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not a harmful motion.
Right.
There's no commitment, really.
You can have a contingency in motion.
Hey.
And we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward Two.
No.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
This means, can I, can I clarify? I can't...
We already did, so...
Yes, we know.
One.
Yes.
So passes four to one. All right, well, we've had our discussion on that. There's agenda, will be adjourned.
Thank you.